Twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. The time is now nine oh three. And we are here today for the purpose of a workshop, which is for envisioned twenty thirty update, student support, student services support. We have approximately one hundred and twenty minutes for this workshop. And if the presenters, due to the fact that we have so many, would introduce themselves when they come up, that would be great. And if we could begin, thank you and welcome.
Good afternoon or good morning, board members. Thank you for indulging us in this comprehensive presentation that we're going to have related to student services. This is, gives you, I think, a really good view of really part of our core mission here at the school district, which is serving our students. For this, we'll start the presentation by turning it over to Cindy McClung, who oversees the whole strategic plan. And she will, of course, then take us through the presentation with the help of, I know, Dr. Spiro, so.
Excuse me.
And a big team.
Ms. McClung, if I may, I want to make sure to see if we have any board members on the phone with us. And I apologize for not mentioning, is Ms. Jivinelli with us?
Yes, good morning.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I'm here. Good morning.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I apologize that I blurted your names. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. So I'm so happy to be with you again this morning to continue our discussion around our strategic plan. You may recall, a few meetings ago, we talked about objective one, increase student achievement, and we focused mainly on the academic achievement piece. So today, you're going to hear about the social, emotional, and mental health pieces and the supports that have come into play, that are always actually in action within our organization, but this year have really taken on a huge importance as we look at the needs of our students. So I look forward to hearing your comments today, and I will turn it over to Dr. Spiro to introduce his team.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McClung. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
We are really excited to be here today to share with you the journey from student services, because we focus on the whole child and academic services, and we did have a whole component around the academic piece. This is the other piece, is just as important, and some would argue even more important than our academic piece, and that's the social, emotional component of not only of our students, but also of our staff at our schools and at the district as well. And you're going to hear from our team members today that are going to point out a lot of the initiatives that have come out of this unique environment that we've been in, some initiatives that we had in place prior to COVID as well, and they're going to be able to give you an update. There are points throughout the presentation where we're going to stop and we'll pause and we'll get an opportunity to ask questions and engage in conversation with you. And today is about a conversation. It's not a presentation where people are going to be reading from a slide, but they're going to be talking with you today. And so I encourage you to take it as this, as a conversation. So let me introduce to you our team of individuals that'll be doing most of the presentation today. As you see out here in the gallery, we have a lot of representatives from the student services department. But we have four individuals who are going to be doing most of the talking, and we have Tammy Scott here as well. And Tammy is going to be driving the presentation through each of the slides, and so that's going to be her role. I have Shelley Taylor here. Good morning, Shelley. Lori Brooks, Jessica Duncan, and Chuck Bradley. And those are the four individuals that will really be doing most of the talking today. And if there's any topic of conversation throughout the course of the morning that you want to go in more in-depth on, we need to know that, and we could either provide for you a white paper or an additional workshop, because I know the student services umbrella is very vast. And so when Dr. Atkins talked about a comprehensive presentation, we tried to go in-depth on a lot of topics, but obviously, we're not going to be able to touch on all of them. And so if there is a particular topic of interest for you that we did not go in-depth enough for, you as a board member, please reach out and we'll make sure we get that for you. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Jessica Duncan and her team. Jessica.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you so much for the opportunity for share, for us to share today. We are excited to let you know about the work we're doing in student services to support the whole child, and also the work we're doing to build relationships with students, their families, and the community. We have so much going on, and we really look to help students in a lot of ways. One, we want to make sure their physical needs are addressed. We do that through hearing, screening, vision screenings. We also work to make sure their social, emotional needs are met. So you're going to hear a lot today about programs that we're using, professional development we offer. We have a strategic focus on mental health and the supports that are provided to students in that arena, and also in behavior. So we offer a lot to administrators and staff as ways to fill their toolbox, to support students who previously maybe were removed from school, to stay in school so that they can continue to get their education in the building and accessing all of those academics and things that they need. You'll hear a lot today about our different departments and also from ESE. At the state level, there is the Bureau of Exceptional Student Education and Student Services. So those two areas are together because of their ties and their collaboration. So throughout today, we're going to go back and forth between the supports and services through both and how we all work collaboratively to support the whole child. As Dr. Spiro mentioned, we will have an opportunity after each section for questions. Our presentation today will be broken up into three sections. We have professional development, student and family support, and then also community connections. So I'm going to start with a brief overview and our goal. So we have our objective one goal, seven, increase the percentage of students who perceive there is an adult in their school who cares about them. So we want to share the work that we do working towards this goal. And we're going to start by giving an overview of the department, so you can see that our department is essentially made up of several smaller departments that all work collaboratively. And we're not going to go over this in-depth, because you can take the opportunity to look at this if you want after, but just want to highlight the different areas. So we have school counseling and mental health, school social work and school psychology. We have positive preventions, and that includes our PBS, our restorative practices, any alternatives to suspension. We have MTSS, five oh four, equity, Title IX, health services. We have constituent services, so that's anytime a parent, community member, anybody has a concern, they can call there and we work to help address that concern and connect them with the right department or people. We work daily on attendance and graduation. And now I'm going to turn it over to Shelley Taylor, who will share some information specific to ESE and ESOL.
Perfect. So good morning. I'm Shelley Taylor. I'm the coordinator for graduation here in the district. Have the privilege of serving in that leadership capacity. And on this slide, we just wanted to be able to show you how we've highlighted many supports. These are supports that are offered throughout our exceptional student education department and also working with our English language learners, meeting the very unique needs of both of those populations. Student services, as Ms. Duncan had said, we do follow under the Bureau of the Department of Ed and working very closely with both of these departments. We work weekly together and collaborate on many of those unique needs, offering teacher training, including in that our, also the ELL graduation task force, and really just appreciate so much, we've got the four principal leads that also work in this area as well. So continuing to work in this core mission with our strategic plan and meeting the whole needs of the child.
So we're going to start by talking about those relationships and things that we're building to increase all of those connections between our students, family, and teacher. I just did want to take a minute too, because I did have a question at the beginning of the presentation, that the gentleman, blow up gentleman in the back of the room, MC man is part of our presentation, so if you're looking back and seeing that, we will get to that later and answer your questions about that.
All right. Good morning. I'm Chuck Bradley, Director of Positive Prevention. And we just wanted to take a minute to talk about the conceptual approach to our work. In student services, we really see our mission as supporting students directly, our teachers and principals that support our students in the classroom on a daily basis, and then the connections we have with families and community that help to support those undergirding relationships with our teachers and principals and our students, all working together. And so some of the programs we're going to highlight for you today represent various levels of our work in helping to facilitate those actions to happen. You're going to hear about grad academy, you're going to hear about attendance, you're going to hear about mentoring programs, and you're going to hear about social, emotional programs that directly impact students every Wednesday within our schools. And you're going to hear about what we're doing in the district to help support positive approaches to behavior support for our students.
Services team is focused on continually building the capacity and self-efficacy of our staff to remove barriers to learning so our students can engage in learning. And one of the first ways we do this is through strategic and targeted professional development. You'll see a list of, and this is by no means a comprehensive list, but some of the main PDs that we did offer in spring, summer, and fall. And I'd like to highlight a few that are indicated in orange font today. And if you'd like more information on any of these, we'll be happy to provide it. The first is Insights to Behavior, which is a web-based platform for functional behavioral assessments and positive behavior plans. We were the first district in Florida to engage in and implement this program to improve the support for students in our district. This company also provides another side to their platform, which is high-quality video-based training. And this is on techniques and skills for building relationships with students, strategies for de-escalation, and teaching replacement behaviors. So during distance learning, when we moved to distance learning, starting in March, 4,464 hours of training were completed by instructional staff and paraprofessionals. During the summer, we also paired this platform with live training via Zoom and provided a behavior boot camp for instructional personnel. And this focused on teaching others how to interpret and respond to the behavior of students. And a little bit later on in this slide, we're going to talk about the importance of our return to school with students who have experienced trauma at unprecedented levels due to the pandemic. So Insights to Behavior was a very timely product for us to engage in because of also looking at behaviors through the lens of trauma and helping our teachers to seek the reason behind the behavior. So one hundred and seventy-two teachers and administrators completed this twelve-hour interpretation and response to behaviors training in July, and the ESE department received excellent feedback on the training, and they've been asked to replicate it for specific schools. They've also, we've also in Lee County, our ESE department, been contacted by two districts outside of the state for assistance in creating a similar product for their district, and our ESE administrators have been asked to present at the next Florida Association of School Administrators Conference. In addition, as the pandemic impacted the United States, all of our services in Lee County School District moved to a telehealth format via Zoom. And then as the district headed into summer, after a spring of staff, students, and families really triaging and responding to the challenges of the opportunities and challenges presented by distance learning, the student services team felt really impassioned to create a self-care campaign on Facebook for our staff. And so leaning into summer, we created a Facebook group, and the goal of that group, when teachers and staff joined it, was to ensure that we provided tools on how to engage in self-care over the summer, because we really needed our adults-to-adult and take care of themselves and their own families so that they could come back to school in August, ready to engage once again. And so we had daily posts and different calendars of tools to help our teachers and our staff find techniques to refresh and recharge. During that time, as leaders, we took a collective deep breath and leaned right into next school year. And that's when the topic of trauma experienced by our students and our staff became the central focus for professional development. And to that end, during the summer, we engaged in some trauma-sensitive training, and then we engaged our teachers for back to school. So over the summer, the School Counseling and Mental Health Services Team offered an overview of trust-based relational intervention training, otherwise known as TBRI. And it uses three harmonious principles for dealing with children from hard places, is really the term that TBRI uses. And since all of our kids right now are kind of in a hard place, most of them are, at some layer, and it's really the level of how they experience this pandemic, we trained our administrators in June on an overview training of TBRI. And then we also trained our mental health professionals in a three-day Zoom training. And our mental health professionals coached teachers through how to work in a trauma-sensitive and informed manner with our children. The three principles of TBRI are connecting, empowering, and correcting. And that training will continue throughout the next several years to expand that training out into our school staff as well. Our back-to-school training for teachers was layered in a format that was on-demand and just in time. We knew that the time demands on teachers were going to be overwhelming as they all tried to plan for Zoom learning and in-person learning, and we had more question marks at the end of our sentences than periods and at that point. And so we engaged the Cognito Company in two online simulation trainings that teachers and staff could engage in at their leisure, and that was with mental health awareness and trauma-informed practices. This training is available to all staff until June thirtieth of 2021. So we purchased access to it for an entire school year, and they can take the modules as often as they'd like. To date, almost six hundred and fifty school staff have finished the training, and we have it open, and we continue encouraging their engagement through the end of that subscription, June thirtieth. Our youth mental health first aid training is designed to teach individuals how to help an adolescent ages twelve to eighteen who's experiencing a mental health challenge or crisis. We've been offering that training and have trained almost fifteen hundred staff. We have a cadre of almost forty certified trainers, and we moved that format entirely online. And we would lean into in-person, because it's highly interactive. So we're leaning back to the in-person when safety permits. And I'll wrap up this slide with Teach Training. Teach Training focuses on de-escalating crisis situations and safe physical intervention that is implemented when necessary with our children. And the company, due to the pandemic, now certifies our participants and allowed us in Lee County to modify the training. And to date, fifty-five new personnel have received training and fifty-one employees have been re-certified.
And just to talk a little bit more about our Teach Training, the MCI man that you see in the back, we had to think of everything differently. So with physical intervention, you have to, in order to certify annually, show that you are proficient in the techniques used in the school. And with the pandemic, we couldn't do that anymore. We couldn't have people come in and partner and show that they could do different techniques. So we worked directly with the company to say, how can we still keep our people certified? Because regardless of COVID, these needs are going to be in the school. How do we ensure our people are certified and keep our students, staff, and everybody safe? And one thing that we worked with and the ESE team spearheaded was getting these blow-up mannequins that can be used, that you can manipulate and actually show the techniques. So anybody who comes in, we used to have a group of, say, thirty people, you would team up, we'd have fifteen partners. Well, now we have one person come in at a time, they work on techniques, and all of the bookwork and learning is done through Zoom. So they've done that to create the training, but still do it safely in our current environment. So that is what we brought, just to show you some of the unique things that are happening in the departments.
Jessica, could you give one example of a technique, just so that everybody's clear on what you're?
Like a demonstration.
A demonstration. I can.
Good verbally. Sherry's volunteering.
So an example of a technique would be if you have a student who's in crisis and they're doing something unsafe, or they're maybe doing something where they might tip a bookshelf or something, and you have to physically intervene, you would do like a child safety hold, where you would essentially wrap your hands, it wraps around theirs, and you hold them securely, you support them through it with, just talking to them through it. You don't talk a lot, because you're trying to de-escalate. And then when the student is able to take some breath and not be in a situation where, when they're released, that they would go back and either try to pull down something that might hurt them, or elope into, like run into traffic or something like that, at that point, you would end the physical intervention and then move into another de-escalation techniques to continue, like to talk the student through why that happened and look at all those factors.
Thank you.
So we're going to talk specifically a little bit about discipline, our restorative practices, and alternatives to suspension. We had the opportunity in the spring to meet with you about the code of conduct. And without going into detail, because we had that presentation, just want to highlight the work we did to really focus on relationships and the importance of that. And you can have every technique in the book, but the most powerful one is relationship with the child. So the first page of our code of conduct emphasizes that. And through that process, we tried to be really transparent and work with a lot of teams. We work with student teams, we worked with student advisory committee, the students at success, we worked with teachers. We gave every administrator in the district the opportunity to come be a part of that planning process, so we didn't want anybody to be surprised, and we wanted to make sure that the people who were impacted this had input. So that was part of our change with the code of conduct. We are already working on our code of conduct next year to even look at some of the behaviors and have more levels, so that our most significant behaviors might be in their own level. So that's some of the work we're doing right now, and we're looking forward to bringing that to you. Additionally, what we did is created a student services administrator handbook. Being an administrator out in a school, I know that there was never really anything I could go to to see, am I doing this process the right way? You know, I trusted my principal or the other administrators around me if I had questions. So we wanted to create a document where administrators could go and have consistency. So a lot of the processes in there were already in place, but maybe they weren't written down. So we took that opportunity in the spring to memorialize those processes. We additionally created some new processes to address current issues like threats on social media or possible threats on social media, to talk schools through the steps of what they would do if they think they have a threat, if they might have a threat, if somebody brings them a post that's just inappropriate or might cause a disruption on campus. So we also created some new processes for those type of things. We worked a lot with schools on Cesser coding. And why this is important is because how you code an event might lead you to select a certain type of discipline or outcome. So we want to make sure that if you're using battery, that in fact, it is a battery and not another offense that might require a different type of consequence. So we have, Brian Mangon actually works directly with schools every single day. That's been a huge support and something we've been able to really, been a very robust support for schools if they have questions or they need to talk through some examples. And he works to give them some other options, and then also works to connect them with Mr. Bradley through positive prevention to say, okay, we have the behavior, but how do we replace that behavior for the child? How do we teach that child the appropriate behavior in the setting or that classroom of children? So we are really connected with our schools and teachers in that area and with a strong focus on alternatives to suspension. So we also have made some changes in our bullying process and our equity process. We've done trainings for all of our administrators on that. We have most recently updated our manifestation process. Manifestation determination is the meeting that schools hold if their students who are ESE, five oh four, or have a perceived disability go through, if they have ten days of suspension. And we made it so that schools really had to do a deep dive into the information to see, is this part of the child's disability? So we wanted them to think through each part of that, really look in the student file, really look to see if there was a pattern of behavior, and think through those decisions critically. So we're excited to roll that out in February. And the next thing in terms of process that we're working on is a custody document for schools. So that means if you're in a school and you have a grandparent show up, or a step parent, or a guardian of item, or a surrogate parent, what can they, what are they entitled to have? What can they look at? What can they get from the file? Who can they talk to? So we want to create a document so there's consistency with that, and when schools have questions, they can always call us, but they also have something they can refer to with those type of questions.
So one of the initiatives that we started working heavily on about a year ago was our restorative practices reboot. And I give some credit to Lee County for some early work in restorative practices several years ago. We did find that as we were really putting our hands around it, that much of it is still there in the district, but we needed to reinvigorate it and begin to make it systemic throughout our district. So the first thing we did was we convened a task force to help us identify what were the common practices that we wanted to focus on. And so as a district, we decided to focus on three key practices under restorative practices, using affective communication, both statements and questions, using circles, both relationship-building and restorative circles, and then also conflict conferencing. And so this summer, we had planned to hold a conference for teachers on the, to really begin the work of initiating those practices. But unfortunately, with COVID, we had to come back and rethink how we were going to do that. And the results that we experienced were probably far better than we would have experienced if we'd had a live conference. So this summer, we provided a virtual professional development. We provided six one-hour sessions that went through these restorative practices and also the integration points with various other initiatives in the district, including PBIS, MTSS, ESE, and our culturally responsive teaching. So with a, with a whole slew of wonderful presenters, very experienced, both within student services and within other areas of our district, we provided those professional development sessions. They were overwhelmingly booked, and so we repeated those offerings through the summer several times and actually had over eight hundred teachers that participated throughout those sessions, and I'll come back to that in just a minute. This fall, we focused heavily on implementation support, just basically problem-solving and technical assistance with those participants. This winter and spring, we have initiated our Journey Rest Stops. These are little mini lessons that we're pushing out to those participants, just to help them to implement little restorative practices moments in their classroom, whether it's a circle activity or just perhaps some statements that they can make to their students, ideas to keep them going. We also initiated our book study, and so we have about seventy-five participants currently studying the book, Hacking School Discipline: Nine Ways to Restore Empathy and Restorative Justice. Right now, that book study is ongoing. We just finished two sessions against seventy-five people between an admin class and a teacher class. This summer, we will plan again to offer our virtual professional development. We're looking at providing not only the Level One training that we provided last year, but also a Level Two training that will take it even deeper. And the last thing that we're initiating is office hours beginning this semester, so that we can help our teachers that are in the process of moving towards recognition. So one of the things we did with our Journey to Restorative is build a recognition process. And this is actually for two reasons. One, it helps us to recognize where we have best practices in the district, but it also it serves as an implementation incentive. And so, as I mentioned, we had over eight hundred teachers who participated in the Journey to Restorative over the summer. We have four hundred and fifty-three of those that actually completed and are now eligible to achieve recognition within the district, and we're having the first few of those come through. To achieve that recognition, we created three levels, diamond, double diamond, and triple diamond. We borrowed a page out of Michelin and tried to tie it in with our theme. As you can read in the, in the criteria, people are required to actually implement the practices that they have learned, and then to give us information back on how that is impacting their classrooms. And again, it's meant as a tool to find those models out there that we can show as best practices, and then also to ensure that we're implementing with fidelity the training that we're providing. So right now, we're in the process of implementing this. You can see that it's represented at the individual, the group, and the school-wide level. We don't expect to have school-wide recognition for a while yet, but we do have our first individuals and our first teams that are starting to emerge demonstrating those practices. One of the practices that you have that's illustrated here, and I just want to brag on Ms. Tika for a minute at Calusa Middle, who sent us a picture, and she said in her, in her email, she said, "I hope I'm doing this correctly." And we could not praise her enough, because she showed an absolute impeccable And we could not praise her enough because she showed an absolute impeccable implementation of a relationship-building circle. And she shared with me the content of that circle that was on a bullying discussion. And some of the comments that were made by the students were just unbelievable in how they see bullying and see it as a problem and how they want to support their fellow students within their school. So, it was an amazing experience and one that we just had to share.
Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Patrica.
I have several. So, for ELL, how much of what was, what's being done at Dunbar as presented by Mr. Burnside and his staff is being implemented in other schools throughout the district? Do we know that?
I can speak to that a little bit because when we began our ELL graduation task force two years ago, we did, we pulled Dunbar in because of the work with their International Center. But specifically over the last summer with our PD, we really used them as best practices. And what I mean is that we developed an action plan and had them write up and really think through like everything they're doing in regards to a timeline, everything that they're doing throughout their year that are not only for their seniors but are through their, for their ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. And then we spotlighted that and had them present that action plan to all of our other schools through our ELL graduation task force. So, specifically, I could go back and really look at the action plans and tell you what steps, but we are highlighting them as a best practice, specifically when we look at their great increases in grad rate.
Okay. And then on restorative practices, you've touched a little bit on the history of it. I remember I was on EDAC my first year on the board, so that was four years ago. And somebody came in and did a training, and everybody in the room participated in the activities that we're implementing in the classrooms, and that was super helpful to me. So, I don't know if we as a board want to go through whatever the three things that you're doing, like actually go through those exercises. That was super helpful to me. You said something interesting. We have implementation incentives.
Correct.
I hear that, and I think that it's a choice in the schools. And it's my understanding based on this presentation that this is a district-wide initiative that is not, you can do it if you want, you don't have to do it if you don't want, but instead we will become a restorative practices district. Is that a fair assessment of where we're headed?
So, I will say that we've created it as a district expectation that we're moving in this journey. At this time, it's invitational, and by focusing on the, what are those that are implementing it doing, we're providing those best practices out there. And so, we're approaching it from that perspective at this time.
So, this is not a requirement then? This is not something that we're saying to our schools, we're going to become a restorative practices district?
At this time, I would say that we as a district are moving towards restorative practices, and we have said that it is an expectation of the district. Have we come up and said that teachers are mandated to take it? No, we have not.
Okay. And then in terms of the code of conduct, have we looked at it with a fine-tooth comb to determine whether students, whether student offenses are based on cultural differences? And if so, what are we doing to remove those?
Yes, we have. So, we actually are using a new program, Power BI, that really helps us look at a number of things: gender, race, ELL status, all of those things. There are some challenges this year because our numbers aren't, they don't really correlate to last year's numbers because we have so many students home. So, obviously, our numbers are down. But yes, and I'm actually going to talk a little bit more in the presentation about some work we're doing on our work with disparities and some of the initiatives we have in that area. And that will come up in the third area of our presentation, so I'll spend a little bit more time there. But yes, we are looking at that, and we are working right now with our administrators. And actually, we'll have an opportunity for the board as well that I want to offer later. So, that will come into our community connection section of our presentation.
And I'm wondering, Ms. Vaughn, whether EDAC has already looked at the code of conduct and whether they should. They have?
They have.
Thanks.
For years. Ms. Morgan, sorry.
So, following a little bit on what Ms. Patrica was saying, restorative justice. When you say you've trained the, all the administrators, who are administrators? You're talking principals, APs, any level below that?
So, we are working with our principals, assistant principals, deans, teacher leads, teachers, so primarily within the certified class.
Okay. So, there is the expectation that leadership will be, is committed to and practicing restorative practices, where we are allowing people to initiate, is in the teaching cadre and the support staff cadre?
Correct. We have started to kind of hardwire restorative practices within the code of conduct and within our practices as a school district. So, again, that expectation is there that we are utilizing those practices. We understand that it takes time for that learning curve, and so there's this process that we're in right now of ensuring that everybody's getting that learning, getting that training.
I'm opposed to mandatory training because some people naturally do this. Some people have gone through this process before and are already practicing it. So, I would assume that the incentives are there for people who are not self-initiators or whatever. But do we evaluate staff? Is that part of the evaluation process, that there is evidence that they are using restorative practices in the classroom so that even people who are not doing the training, there is the expectation that they will be using those practices?
I don't know if I could answer that question fully today. I do think that, I'll go back to, we have so many pieces within our area of student services that touch on this and the need for it. So, we have trauma-informed care training that is going on that talks about the trauma that our students have been through. Through that, we talk about how traditional approaches to discipline and to behavior support have broken down and are not as effective. So, this is not a panacea, but it is a very effective tool that helps to address the needs of our students in today's world. And so, for that reason, we're moving it forward.
I guess my question is more general. So, we have an expectation that everybody who interacts with students is prepared to provide some sort of emotional, social support.
Yes.
How do we recognize that or how do we identify the need for that in staff?
Part of that is working directly with the administrator at the school. So, some of that is the work that teams will do during their PLC time, where they look at their student needs and identify needs of certain students. We also do that behaviorally. Again, this year was a challenge trying to look at data, but last year, we would look at data every two weeks. And if we saw an increase in any area or anything that looked like there might be on the way to a significant increase, we reached out directly to that school to say, what's going on? And sometimes it was the case, hey, we got a new student. They're really challenging. Okay, let's talk about that and how we can implement some strategies. We also do work in the field. So, you'll hear a little bit more later today about how we support some of our outside agencies, but we also have learning resource specialists who do fieldwork. So, if there is a challenge or whether it be a classroom situation that an administrator or a teacher has identified that they need some supports, or it's an individual student, we do have people that can go out and support and work on strategies right there embedded in the classroom with the teacher. So, that is part of that practice.
I'm just going to make one last comment. I mean, sitting in student advisory and sort of just generally since we've introduced what are called restorative practices in this umbrella of training and services, how do we get to the point where students aren't saying they do things differently at another school? I guess that's what I'm, you know, that there, how do we build in that there is a vocabulary and a process that everybody understands and those in positions of responsibility are held accountable for?
Sure. I think I would just add, we're in that process right now of building that infrastructure that can help to support that, getting those best practices out there that we can then go to to say, this is, this is what we're talking about, this is what we're expecting, ensuring that there's clear communication of those expectations, dealing with the concerns of those that don't understand this or are still working through. How do they translate from what they've known to this reality? And so, I will say we're in the process of building that infrastructure, Ms. Morgan.
And the other piece I just want to add in terms of how this plays out in the field, this is like the support team right here. The group that holds the expectation for a school is the executive director. So, the executive director for whatever, those are the supervisors of the principals. So, working with Mr. Mangan, you know, they're going to do, they constantly are looking at that discipline data, and if they identify that there's an issue here, they're going to work with that particular principal on that, including providing these types of support that these folks are discussing. The other piece that I think is important is that that's part of what the principal leads do as well. You heard, I believe Shelley was mentioning, the ESE principal leads. These are experts that work really well in the area of ESE. That's the way we can help spread best practices. But those other more traditional leads also help when it comes to what are effective discipline strategies, including PBIS, and how can we make sure that that's being implemented with fidelity in those particular, in a specific building.
And I would say, Dr. Atkins, you were spot on. I was coming up here to share with you that we, Mr. Mangan, Jessica Duncan, and the team, we look at the discipline data on an ongoing, regular basis, how often, weekly. And we look at that data, and if there are disparities in schools that really stick out, that's when we do reach out to those schools. Mr. Mangan will do that, the executive directors as well. I think a great example we could use is an elementary school last year where we saw there were some real attendance issues. The support team came in place here, worked with that team at that school on a regular, ongoing basis, had a tremendous impact at that school that even today, there's a system in place that's a result of that intervention that was put in place by this team here. So, I would say that was the one piece. So, that is an ongoing piece, and I think it's important. It's part of that monitoring process. The other one, as I was sitting here, I was reflecting, if you think back over the last couple of years, what the code of conduct looked like, you know, it looked, it was very punitive. It was, here's an action, here's a consequence. Here's an action, here's a consequence. And what has transpired over the years is an evolution of opportunities for schools to look at each individual student and look at them as an individual and say, what's going on with this child and what interventions can we put in place? Yes, there still needs to be an accountability piece, but it gives schools opportunities to look at a myriad of opportunities of, lack of a better word, interventions, consequences to deal with that particular child. So, I think our journey with restorative practice is a piece of that as we continue to give schools opportunities to work with students individually. And so, I just want to say, yes, are we systemic at this point? No. Are we on, well on our way down the road of becoming systemic? I believe we are because professional development is such an important component whenever you're trying to make an initiative systemic, and we are a large institution. So, we've talked about how we're going to do a thoughtful but slow implementation so it becomes a fabric of the way we do work, not just come in real quick and then people see it as kind of a one-time treatment as opposed to this is the way that we are going to be implementing class management and student discipline. So, it is part of that journey, and I just wanted to share that, my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, just a second, Ms. Gittens, please. Thank you. Ms. Vaughn, I'll call on you.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments and then a couple of questions. I think one thing to remember is that, and I'm sure you all realize this, that one size does not fit all. And the most important thing to me with my teaching background is that sometimes you will see something, and it goes for academics, it goes for discipline, for all of these, that works wonderfully well for one teacher, and it does not work for another teacher. It has a lot to do with personalities. I don't want to see this to become robotic. I'm glad you mentioned relationships because it's my experience that those first couple weeks are key. And if you establish a relationship in your class, whether it's, I taught everything from senior advanced placement to low-level high school reading. If you establish mutual respect from day one and really focus on that, that relationship will get you a long way. And of course, I'm not discounting, there are always those other things along the way to students that have gone through, and certainly right now, more trauma, homelessness, foster care, that sort of thing. But I just did want to make that comment. The other thing, and I know we brought this up when we were talking about early childhood education and the kind of discipline that's done in those early years. And when I've toured early childhood education centers, I have been so impressed with the little kids and how polite and wonderful they are, frankly, better than many of the older kids. So, what are we doing, I've asked this before, in our lowest levels, in our, I should say, in our primary grades? Because quite a few, several years ago, maybe five or six years ago, I was on an advisory committee just as a citizen member. And I know that it was brought up that we are starting this, we're doing it in our, I think it's in middle school. And my question was, okay, let's use some of it in middle school, but can we not, you know, I guess I'm asking, has this advanced through our lower levels? And hopefully, it has. And I'm looking for the data. Have we seen a change as, you know, it's initiated in second, third, fourth, and here are the kids up here, and we have the meeting of the, so have, what kind of changes have the teachers, let's say, in intermediate levels seen that this focus in the lower grades, the primary grades, has helped them? And I'll go back to what Ms. Morgan said, it's, and I've mentioned it also, we need a common vocabulary. We need a common system. So, would you talk about that for a couple of minutes, please?
Do you understand what the question is that she's asking? Okay. Just want to make sure.
Specific programs. So, PBS is the framework that we use to set expectations for students, but schools can use different programs within their school. So, Mr. Bradley will talk about a couple of things they can select, but what might be something for us moving forward is to then do a further analysis of programs schools use compared with their discipline, and then we can see, is there really an impact between certain programs that are, seem to be more effective than others? So, if you want to mention a couple?
Sure. And I'll reiterate. So, PBIS, PBS, those positive behavior systems that undergird a school, those form the foundation. They intersect with MTSS. So, Tammy and I spend a lot of time making sure that those tiered supports are there for students, universal supports for all, the tier-two supports for some, and then the tier-three intensive supports for those students that need them. But as well, we have a social-emotional learning programs throughout our schools. They do tie back to the CASL standards, which we brought to the board a while back. It's been some time, but we, as a district, have looked at those CASL standards in terms of the benchmarks and the vocabulary around how we want to work with our students in that social-emotional arena. And then the programs that are in place in our district align to those standards. So, that becomes that common vocabulary while still allowing for diversity of programs. Some of the programs that are used in our schools are Second Step, which is used, has been around for a while, still an extremely effective program and well, a comprehensive program used in our schools. Our elementaries were afforded through a philanthropist several years ago, access to a program called Sanford Harmony, which is a wonderful social-emotional learning program. It's provided free. It, at one point, was provided free with physical materials. It is now provided free virtually, but teachers, of course, can use the materials in their classrooms. Leader in Me, which is aligned with the social emotional learning curriculum and has worked towards aligning more over the last few years, is another wonderful example. And then you get into high school, we have Avid. We have other programs that pull from that social emotional learning curriculum and tie it right back into their curriculum as well. ROTC actually includes components of social emotional learning as well. So all of these various programs, and as you mentioned, they're, it's hard to find a one-size-fits-all, and that's why we've gone with more of a menu of programs.
Yeah, and I know we've been briefed on most, all of those, but what I'm asking is, do you have any data that shows, okay, we've been moving these programs along from, let's say, primary grades into intermediate and all, that when the kids get to, let's say, sixth grade, that they've learned these things? I mean, there should be, if it's being effective, there should be something, if you look back five, six years ago, because didn't we initiate it about six, when did it first, about six years? At least six years ago, I was on, I think, CSI in about 2015, and it was discussed then, it was just starting.
So the primary data we would look at would be our discipline data, and we have, since we have started looking at this, seen decreases. It's difficult necessarily at middle school because so many students go to so many different middle schools who might have done different programs. But again, I think that maybe looking at least in elementary school, you can't completely say that a school's success is based on a program because there's so many things, teacher and administrative, but I think one of the things we could do is look and see specific schools, what programs they're used correlated with their data over time, and see if maybe certain programs seem to be having more of an impact. So that's something we can do moving forward.
I'm just not even interested right now in different programs. What I'm asking is globally, have we seen, for whatever program the schools are choosing to use, have we seen better results? And the other thing that I haven't heard much discussion or any discussion about is Success Academy. That also was, I think, from around that time period when it went from ALC punitive to Success Academy. Are we, do we still have students physically, if they're assigned to Success Academy, they're physically there? Is that not correct? And then what's happening with Success Academy? Is there high rate of recidivism? Do we still have prevention plan, or what was it called?
Prevention Center.
Prevention Center.
Prevention Center.
Yeah. Do we still have those? And, you know, we really haven't heard anything about that data and success on that level. So I'm really happy for all the programs and all that you do, but I'm not seeing what's happening.
So I see, I see Mr. Mangan up here to talk about Success Academy. He is one of the leads. Success Academy would fall under, again, the executive for high school, so we do support programs there, but I'll let Mr. Mangan speak to some of the work he's done there.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. I, getting back to the first question, yes, we've not seen an overall decrease in our discipline data over the last five years. I have to try and pull up a bunch of charts and that sort of stuff. Oh, my bad, sorry. But we have seen a decrease in our discipline data over the last five years, going back to that benchmark you were discussing, 2015, 2016. At a later presentation, we can, or at your request, send you that information in charts and tables to illustrate that. In regards to Success Academy, we have seen a decrease in recidivism. There is still some that happens, unfortunately, but that is the truth of the matter. And the Success Academy administration, with your request and permission, would like to come in and present what has been happening over the last two years, last year, this year, with the work that they have done, and to include the Prevention Center, because we've also seen an expansion of our services and what they're doing there to include the Grad Academy now that is being piloted by Mrs. Taylor over there.
Okay, I don't know about my colleagues, but I certainly would like to see some data on that because it seems to me we just really, and that's a key part of the restorative practices, as I said, right?
So perhaps if we could have Success, Dr. Atkins, if we could have Success Academy, of course, come in and maybe perhaps at that time, if we have some data that we could share.
Absolutely.
Or even before, is what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Ms. Gittens, do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, well, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, thank you.
All right. I was, Morgan was saying, one second, it's a bad reverb. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Back to what Ms. Morgan was saying initially about, it sounded, you know, kind of like one-size-fits-all, and you discussed that, so I won't go over that again. But my comment was about the fact that each of our schools, each of our areas has a certain thing that makes it different, and that's why as a part of teacher education, they differentiate instruction. And the way that, like Dr. Spiro was saying, the way the truth was, that's why to me, making sure we are in close contact and working with the administrators and the counselors around head-specific schools for their specific needs is really important, and thank you all for your work.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. J. Vannelli, do you have any questions?
Hi, Don. A lot of people ask a lot of good questions. So I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
Thank you.
Please continue. Thanks.
So as we move on, we've talked extensively about professional development and structures we currently have in place and how we expanded those over the past several years. And now we're moving into mentoring and support. So a few highlights on this slide would be the required instruction through the three-state Board of Education rules that began last September when the third and final rule was passed. These would be the topics of mental and emotional wellness, substance use and abuse prevention, and the prevention of child trafficking. As we entered year two of that initiative, we actually formalized the secondary level into Wellness Wednesdays. We branded it and we marketed it so that our schools knew that one Wednesday a month for 10 different Wednesdays, they would engage in this learning. And so it's become well-known as Wellness Wednesday, so we're happy about that because the schools are calling it that and identifying with it. And this is for middle and high school students to receive this required instruction. And then also, that started October 7th. Now, in a typical school year, we would start it with the first month of school, but with everything else and all the other supports, we were allowing teachers and providing them tools to put into place, we wanted to wait on this specific initiative this year. However, our goal next year would be to start in August and do one Wednesday per month of the school year. We continue to send those informative letters home to parents as well so they're aware of this instruction, and we included this in the district parent guide this year. Elementary level does not have a designated day for this instruction. At the elementary level, it is substance use and abuse prevention and the prevention of child trafficking. Because there's such a focus on social emotional learning, K-12, but especially this learning embedded into classrooms, K-5, the State Board of Education did not specifically call it mental health and emotional health instruction. It's really more strategic SEL. So we have letters that are sent home to families as well, and the schools at the elementary level, they embed this into their teaching instruction as they can schedule it throughout the school year. And the school district prevention specialists, along with Leisha Roy, I call her our master health teacher, they developed a K-12, K-2, grade K-2 substance use and abuse curriculum that's being implemented this year. In regards to check and connect, this is our mentoring program that began at Cape Coral High School, and Shelley Taylor has been instrumental in its implementation. They moved that into a virtual framework through the pandemic, connecting with students through Zoom and implementing technical assistance as needed through the check and connect facilitators. They also began bridging those services for students who were enrolled at a traditional school that moved to alternative locations to make sure that connection stayed, because as we all know, one meaningful adult is one of the biggest protective factors for a student. We continued summer counseling for students and families in need. We've been providing support in the summers, but this past summer it was critical, and we did that through our district licensed mental health professionals and in partnership with many of our community agencies that were offering really a continuum of mental health from just kind of Zoom support groups all the way through therapeutic counseling for students and parents. And then as we headed back to school and leave virtual school, experienced unprecedented growth and needed some support for some of the structures that they needed to grow quickly. We were able to support them in the senior, grade 12 students, getting connected with their credit recovery needs quickly. That needed to happen in the first few days of school. And again, Shelley Taylor and team were instrumental in providing a framework within our current edgenuity structures that our brick and mortar schools had to address this through the leave virtual students. In fact, Shelley, for several weeks, served as the administrator of that program until leave virtual found a teacher to take that over. And now I think I'm turning it over to Jessica Duncan.
So one of the things that was significantly impacted during distance learning was evaluations because students weren't here face-to-face. The psychologists did as many components of an evaluation as they could, whatever they could do that wasn't face-to-face, they completed. But one of the things that Amy Clark worked on was bringing Q Interactive in so that our psychologists could complete their evaluations electronically. So there's two iPads. So when the students came back, they had an iPad for a student and an iPad for a psychologist. And what this did is it made for a safer environment, so there was less passing of paper and materials. Also, it cut the evaluation time by about 25%, so they were able to complete evaluations more quickly. Evaluations could be scored electronically, and also if there were some changes that needed to be made, you could see that in real time. So a psychologist wouldn't have to go back, start looking through their paperwork, see there was an issue, and say, oh, I need to do another test. They could really see that as they were going. The impact of evaluations during this time was that there was 634 ESE evaluations and 345 gifted evaluations that were delayed. During the time that families were home, every family that had an open consent got a call from a psychologist. So it gave parents the opportunity to, even though testing was delayed, evaluation was delayed, to talk about any behavioral or academic concerns with a psychologist. So that was one thing that department did to really support families during this time. So of those delayed, now, and now that we've been back, evaluations have continued, and 317 of these delayed ESE and 182 gifted are complete. So it's been a great tool for staff and a really innovative way to look to provide something differently. Another thing that's happened in this area is we're also working on interns. So I know that Amy has been working closely with the HR department. I believe that we are looking to double our interns this year, so there's a lot of great things happening in psychological services.
Okay, as we move into school-based mental health, please know that my intent is not to give you a graphic that hurts your eyes, as it is very detailed, but the Department of Education graphic really depicts, and this is the most important articulation, is that it depicts a system of care. And school-based mental health nestles within all of the structures we've been talking about so that we can address students that need to have a really strong foundation, which is all students, and then what do we do for students that may need more? So I also have this via PDF if you would like to be able to read all of the different initiatives. Just let me know. Let's talk a little bit about the layers, though. The universal prevention layer is the bottom layer, tier one. And of course, this is everything we've talked about thus far and more. This is the required health instruction that our students are receiving, partnered with the youth mental health first aid training that all teachers and staff and administrators are to be engaging in. Of course, that's a multi-year initiative around the state to get everybody trained. But we talk about common language, and we talk about understanding typical versus atypical adolescent development, and understanding signs and symptoms of possible mental health challenges, and how to talk to children. Well, while teachers and staff are learning that in youth mental health first aid and the cognito products that we've pushed forward this year, our students are learning about, how do I know if I'm going through a typical period of sadness, and then when do I need to be concerned as a student? So the required instruction directly aligns with what our teachers are also and our staff are learning. So you've got our universal layer, and it's also PBIS, restorative practices, all of these different school structures that help our students know when they come to school, they're in a safe and orderly environment. How do we ensure they have that sense of felt safety? And then also going right back to the essential question today is that our goal is that each student knows and can articulate that at least one adult in their building clearly cares about them and they can connect to them. Our goal would be that students can name several in their building and that they feel it from the time they get out of their parents' car off the bus. And so as you look at school-based mental health, universal prevention is everybody's work. It's everything our schools are doing through some of the programs that we offer and how we support them. And then also, we want to look at what do we do for students that may need specific mental health support? And to that end, every school has an interdisciplinary school mental health team. The members of that team are the mental health professionals, which in state statute are defined as our school counselors, our school social workers, our school psychologists, our district itinerant licensed mental health professionals, and also our school nurses because of the somatic complaints that students may present within the clinic. They're such a critical part of our team. Now, our teams meet weekly and talk about, we call it, it's a Rick Parfitt expression, it's collecting the dots and connecting the dots. So we talk about the ABCs. We talk about the student's attendance, their behavior, their course performance, parent observations, student input, the input of other staff members that provide their observations to the team, and we follow an evidence-based problem-solving model to really screen students with parent permission and dig into and unpack, do you have a need for mental health services, and to what degree and at what level? Is it going to be provided by our school-based mental health professionals, or will there be a referral for outside services? So right now, our school-based mental health professionals provide small group counseling, typically following cognitive behavioral therapy models, and then also individual counseling. Last school year, we served almost 5,000 students through school-based mental health services. Now, that does not account for the students that had generalized support through a short period of time from their school counselor, social worker, psychologist. These are students that are just our general way of work, that may go through a rough spot and need support, but the specific mental health protocols served almost 5,000. Thus far this school year, since we began in August, 998 additional cases, new cases have been opened this school year for mental health services. So we are addressing the needs, and we have extra supports in place, including our small groups with the cognitive behavioral therapy to reduce symptoms of anxiety and depression, and also new partnerships in our community. So we have many community partnerships, including grief support at Valerie's House. We can make referrals to the FGCU Counseling Center. We also host master's-level school counseling interns, and we're pleased to say that we are growing that partnership into hosting mental health program interns next fall. And we've had our regular referral processes to Salus Care, but we're really excited. But we're really excited to mention that now in place, under CARES Act funding, we also have a new family community response team initiative with Salus Care, specific to rapid response for families in need of support for COVID. And these teams include a licensed counselor, a peer mentor, and a case manager that will work with kids and the family in need of counseling and also different supports that COVID may have impacted their household. And so this is totally free, insured, underinsured, not insured. This is entirely free until September of 2022 for students in this district that are referred by our teams. And my last two partnerships that I'd like to highlight are the Mobile Crisis Response Team that we call when we have students with suicidal ideation to ensure that in a trauma-sensitive way, we have licensed, this team has licensed mental health counselors on it that will do their level best to de-escalate a child and connect them and their family to services as opposed to initiating a Baker Act. Now, of course, if a Baker Act is warranted, they must go down that path. However, they will work with that child for up to two hours to really assess them and ensure that they get the services they need and that we're not inappropriately Baker-acting students. And then we've had the Mental Health Navigator Program now is in its second year through Lee Health and Kids Minds Matter. And we've served 19 families. Now, that may not seem like a lot, but the Mental Health Navigator Program is the most intensive need for a student and a family. And they can only carry, we have two navigators from Kids Minds Matter in our district, and they can only carry, they can only carry a caseload of maybe five to six families at a time. So serving 19 families. And that duration of stay could be up to 12 months for that family. And they're the most intensive layer of need. And, okay, so now, oh, sorry, I thought it was a note to me. Now we'll very briefly move into the back-to-school toolkit. So I wanted to cover the continuum of mental health services first because as we were planning for back-to-school, we also knew that we needed to help our teachers find ways to build relationships quickly with students and to also do that not only in person but via Zoom. And some teachers had blended classrooms, which presented their own unique challenges. So if you don't mind, oh, good, you're scrolling, that's perfect. What we did is we convened, this entire team convened of leaders, and we tapped our staff in the field. So school counselors, social workers, psychologists, nurses, our intervention support specialists, our district licensed mental health professionals, all of us worked together on these topics. And this was led by Sheri Wenzel, our mental health coordinator, to really create a back-to-school toolkit. So we talked about the importance of students feeling safe. And we had so many people that weren't quite sure they were safe with all the COVID ramifications. But the feeling of felt safety for our children, that was a job we could make sure happened for our kids from the day they walked into school, even if we weren't quite sure where we stood with COVID and a potential spread. We wanted to build relationships quickly and we wanted to start measuring where our children were coming out of months of being at home. And so we crafted lessons for the toolkit that teachers could use that were focused on building teacher-student relationships and builds a sense of community. So you can see from the slides up on your screen, we also focused on attendance and tips for addressing attendance, health and safety. Some of the most important pieces of us being safe were our adults and also our students, washing their hands, wearing their masks, social distancing. So we had fun videos that made these messages easy for schools to continue to post and get the word out and the reminders. And we also had resources for mental health, mentoring. You'll see all the topics up there, including that cognito staff training. And then also lessons that focused on safety, social emotional learning, and helping students process and talk about what life had been like for them since March. In addition, a cadre of K-12 school counselors was developed to enhance and modify for distance learning, school counseling lessons that were based on fostering resiliency. And all of this work was intentionally targeted with strategies for in-person, kids on Zoom, and blended so that everyone had a piece of that interaction and being able to build that sense of classroom community. And I will now turn it over to Chuck for attendance.
Great. One of the highest correlates to student success is attendance, actually being there, being present, being engaged in our classrooms. They have the highest chance of success when students are in school. So this year, we also participated in our attendance works, attendance campaign. September is National Attendance Awareness Month. And so this year, with COVID-19, it becomes a difficult and sensitive message to say to our parents, our kids need to be in school, but we also are very cognizant of challenges that you face in this new reality during the pandemic. So we were very pleased. We'd actually talked about, our focus before the campaign was going to focus on engagement. And when the campaign actually came out as present, engaged, and supported, we embraced it. And so we want to thank you, Dr. Atkins, for signing on as superintendent, added his name to the superintendent's letter of support. The campaign focuses on getting messaging out to our families and our students and our staff on the importance of attendance and in terms of this reality, the importance of being engaged, of being present and supported, whatever that means. So some of those campaign activities that we engaged in, we sent out social media messaging. We want to thank Ms. Irma Lancaster and her department for helping to prepare social media posts and pushing things out through Peach Star. We also sent things out to our principals to add right into their local school newsletters. Teachers actually posted things in their classroom. And some of the things that we did to assist, you can see that picture on the right, was a walking school bus. And so Dr. Spiro mentioned one of the activities that we did this last year. I want to thank Jessica and Tammy and Shelley and everybody else who participated, especially at Edgewood Elementary, Edgewood Academy, where we actually went out and we conducted walking school bus activities for a period of time with school staff. It was a lot of fun. It also focused on the importance of attendance for our families and how important it is to be up and on time and ready to go. We did professional development with teachers around attendance. And then we also provided some incentives, some food basically, and celebrations for our teachers to celebrate improving attendance and good attendance within our schools. This campaign not only focuses on students, it focuses on staff, how important it is for staff to be on time and show up for school every day as well. During this time, we know that it's difficult and so we did have to change our systems to match this new reality. And so one of the things that was added this year as we looked at face-to-face, Home Connect, and also our Google Classrooms was the addition of a GC code so that we could track attendance for our students that were participating in school through Google Classrooms as they were in that mode of learning. We did have to communicate this with our families and with our schools in terms of how does it work? But the idea was to keep our students engaged and connected, always with that in the foreground. With that, it became a very difficult process then for our teachers and our schools in terms of how do we track attendance? Those of you that have been teachers, school-based personnel, know firsthand that it can be very difficult in a face-to-face situation alone, just tracking who's in school, who's tardy, who's leaving early, who's signing in late, those kinds of things. So I really want to credit two people, Tammy Scott and Shelley Taylor, really took this by the horns and said, we need to really develop our attendance processes in this new reality. What does tardy look like in a Home Connect environment? What happens if a student turns off their camera for 10 minutes? What do we do about that? So how do we track that data so that we know that our students are being engaged? So Tammy and Shelley really went to task, Tammy, is this slide not changing? Oh, there it is, thank you. Really went to task on honing in on what does it look like within each of these environments? We, again, engaged people from the field in terms of what does it look like? In addition to creating an attendance and record-keeping handbook that was revised this year. So that, all of these processes were, again, codified so that we could help our schools track attendance and provide for better processes in ensuring that attendance was marked correctly across our schools. And it's ongoing work. It's not a perfect world. Technical assistance is being provided on a daily basis in terms of what do we do in specific situations to ensure that we're marking attendance correctly? So I won't go through all of this flow chart. You can see it's quite elaborate, quite technical, but it was designed to help ensure that within each of those modes, we are tracking attendance correctly. As well, the attendance and record-keeping handbook codified many of our processes for attendance on a much more broader basis in terms of tracking our students who have chronic absenteeism and what we need to do to intervene in those situations. So all in all, we've focused a lot of our work around attendance and we continue to do so.
All right, thank you so much, Chuck. What I would like to do is just spotlight really quick our amazing graduation data. So, you know, the important thing about this data is we're never looking at the same students year after year. And we know that we're going to continue to ask ourselves, how can we continue to improve? How can we continue to increase our graduation data? And we know that caring for students is certainly at the core of that. And when much is given, much is expected. And we continue to be hungry for every student to walk across that stage and gain their diploma within four years. I just want to finish this one, I want to be really quick by saying that I will be coming back February 8th for a more in-depth view. And we'll be looking at all of our data and specifically our subgroups and really looking at those trends. But we're super excited we had over 6,000 graduates this year. So I do want to move on to the next slide. And to me, this is really the heart of why our graduation data is where it is. It's because we continue to really care about kids. We don't want to see them leave our school. And so we're really looking at our systems that are in place. Ms. Lori Brooks talked a little bit about relationships and mentoring, and we spend a lot of time on relationships. But the great thing here is that we are really putting into place the best practices for, and the most effective practices for dropout prevention. And those include having safe schools at our top, having school-community partnerships, and utilizing systems. So this kind of points to the adult mentoring framework that we've put in place, our best practices for dropout prevention that is on the right side, our flow chart there, that really talks about, you know, when a student does decide to quit, when they want to exit, what are we going to do as a school? What are we going to do as a team and how are we going to support? And it really points back to, okay, did we do everything that we could in the area of attendance? Were we providing interventions in that area? Did we do everything we could for behavior? If there were behavior characteristics, you know, did we ensure that this student was in a better place because they were a student in Lee County School District?
Okay, good question.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions, if I may. In that interactive, the interactive evaluations, 317 were completed. When will the rest of those be completed? And also, I believe that you said that there was a method that you could do with two different computers. So if that is the case, why are we not able to do it via Zoom?
They do need a proctor. So each has an iPad, but there has to be a proctor. So our psychologist for many of the evaluations has to be in the room with the student. So we're not able to do that where they're in a different location where they're not monitored through that evaluation. The evaluations are continuously scheduled. Our psychologists, as you heard through some of these other presentations, also participate in our mental health teams, in our IEP meetings, working with onsite support with students. So they do have other components, but already through this, they have half. So we anticipate, Amy, do you know any specific timeframe that you're looking at for referrals? Like where do you expect to be by the end of the year?
As Jessica was saying, we do have ongoing referrals coming in, so that is updated every day. We are at, and I actually took a couple of notes here, so let me look. I was just looking at our spreadsheets. But we have completed additional evaluations even over the last couple of weeks and have had a couple of hundred additional evaluations coming in since the beginning of the school year that are ongoing and being completed, as well as an additional 280 gifted evaluation requests. So that is an ongoing, updated list.
Okay, because I'm just concerned, I know that it's difficult with the times that we're in, but these kids who do have these, you know, ESE 504s, whatever, we need to make sure that we are able to address that and take care of it and making sure that they're having the services that they need. That's my only concern when I see that there's quite a few that haven't been evaluated.
And we agree. We were one of the first districts in Florida to open back up to face-to-face evaluation. So we did make that a priority in our district to get students back and begin those evaluations. So we'll continue to monitor that. And it looks like about halfway that we've, and Amy shared, even since then, additional have been completed. So we'll continue to monitor that and make sure that those are happening as quickly as we can.
Yes, I do have that updated number. We have 537 now completed, 258 of the gifted completed that had been open and continuing to do those. And we have additionally another 79 recent evaluations that have been completed. We do have a 60-day timeline for initial evaluations to make sure that we can complete those evaluations within a timely manner for those initial referrals. And we work to complete within that 60-day timeline as well. We are regularly recruiting for staff to get those done as well.
Perfect, thank you, Amy. And then I had another question on page 19 with the attendance campaign. Where are we at with that as far as able to reach those ones who we have not been able to reach? Or is that pretty much, are we done and have we reached out and have touched everybody?
I will just mention here, because we are going to talk about that a little bit later in the presentation, but that is ongoing work. And particularly when we heard some alarming numbers from other districts. And early on, we did look at our numbers in terms of who was not, who we had not been in touch with. And we went hard to work on making sure that those students were contacted and either brought in or accounted for.
Okay, so we are still continuing to go out and do that?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then the, and I'm sorry, I just watched what my kids and other kids go through. The Google Classroom, so when a child gets sent home and, okay, they get sent home, you got to go home, you get picked up, you go home, and now you're in Google Class world. How does that, and I know that, I guess something goes back to the teacher, which says the student has been, but that day that they go back, they go home, they're not right on Google Class. So where does that put them as an absent? Are they considered absent from their class because they haven't, they've tried to sign in, but there's nothing there for them to sign in to? And are they all trained? Are the kids trained at school that if you go home and you have to go to Google Class, this is where you go and this is how you do it? Because I know the parents are not trained on how to get their child on that, even though you've said, here you go, they picked you up, here's your computer, take it home, go to Google Class.
So many of our teachers were using Google Classroom even prior to the pandemic. Then when students were home, they were all using Google Classroom. So when they leave, they go directly to, they're coded as Google Classroom, and then they are coded that way for actually 10 days. So if they come home, if they come back to school, so if, say they're out for a potential illness but are able to come back with a doctor's note, that is removed, but it is Google Classroom. The day they're in school, they're marked present because they're there, but every day for
But every day forward, up to 10 days or potentially more based on student need, they are marked as Google Classroom.
Okay. And then one last question for me. I had the privilege of watching FSBA Equity and Diversity. It was supporting boys of color. And it was speaking about what you were just speaking about, when they turn off the computer. And a lot of times, families or kids, they turn it off because they don't want you to see what's behind them. But, so how do we, how are we addressing that? Are we saying that they're absent from that class, even though you can hear them, but they're unfortunately not wanting everybody to see what's inside their home?
Certainly. It's an issue that the teacher and the student work out together in terms of that relationship. So, the expectation is that they're engaged in class. And if there's a reason that the camera's turned off temporarily and they remain engaged in class, then it does not count as tardy or an absence. The expectation is that cameras are on, and then if there's a problem with that, we work that out with the student and the family.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Are there any, Ms. Javonelli, do you have any questions, please? Ms. Javonelli?
Hold on. I have a couple of questions regarding the dropout rate. I am curious what, how we compare to Collier and Charlotte. And then, what are we doing to capture those students that were losing? That may not be done, the right path for graduation?
Okay. I can address the first question in regards to our comparison with Charlotte and Collier. Let me look at my list. Charlotte's data from the same, so we're looking at 1819 compared to the slide. So, Charlotte dropout rate is 4.7%, and Collier is 3.0%. And in regards to the students that we are missing, I don't want to assume anything, but let me kind of delve a little bit into the situation. So, when a student is truly saying that they want to quit school, that is different than a dropout that is with a student that we can no longer find. So, all of those students, the students that are coded W-22, the students that cannot attend school because of court, the students that are not attending because they have been withdrawn due to attendance, all of those students do, are included in our dropout rate. But my understanding is the question is, it sounds like it is just about our W-05 with our true dropout, the ones that want to exit. And so, what we are doing is we're really utilizing that W-05 code is the last, it is really the last draw. So, I can give you the best practices for dropout prevention, the flow chart, because it is kind of hard to read on that tiny screen. But what we are doing for them and with them is really delving into the root cause. Why are these students choosing to exit? We know that dropout is a process. It has not happened the day that the student decides, hey, I want to quit. It starts years prior. And that's really where I point to the early warning system and those practices that we have put in place through a graduation lens to address our kids that do have needs for attendance, behavior, and class performance way down in pre-K and elementary and working with our graduation initiatives, not only in high school. But part of that W-05 going back is our community partnerships. So, we have Destination Graduation, really looking at those at-risk kids. But we also have, through Career Source, who provides Destination Graduation mentors, there's also funding for out-of-school youth. And so, through our partnership with our memorandum of understanding, we do share our dropout data and our dropout information in hopes that not only can the Lee County School District reengage. So, within three weeks, we are calling students, we are trying to get them back. But we're also working with our community partners so that they can also say, okay, do you want to come here? Do you want to come to our facility? Can we work on GED? How can we better prepare you to still engage in education and really be, you know, the community member that really is delving into being the best at making those decisions? So, I hope that helped. But again, if there are additional questions, I can always provide that and the answers to that in our upcoming presentation.
And something I might just add. I know that Dr. Spiro and I believe the team has been working with Acceleration Academy. And so, that's something that I think you all have been made, you know, you're familiar with that. We've re-engaged, and he's just now walking back in the room. But I don't know if you want to give them an update in terms of Acceleration Academy, where we are.
Afternoon. Yes, thank you. Acceleration Academy, we've begun conversations with Acceleration Academy. This is an organization that re-engages students that have dropped out of school, and they try to get them back into our, into a program with them so that they can at least have a GED, which opens up some additional doors for them. That, Acceleration Academy has worked with our curriculum department. They have met with human resources, budget, and information systems. So, we've had the opportunity to engage them with all facets of our organization. And our next step is to sit down with Dr. Atkins and talk about our next actions with them. But we are well down the road with Acceleration Academy as another way to make sure that we hold on to our kids as much as possible.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Javonelli, do you have any other questions, please? Ms. Javonelli? Okay. Ms. Gittens, do you have any questions, please?
Oh, thank you. I don't think so. Can you hear me any better?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Thank you. Did you have any questions?
No, I'm fine now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
I was going to ask about the charter, the charter schools that have many of our withdrawn students. I know, and I honestly have not followed along. Do we still have the charter school that is accelerating for middle school students? Okay. And I know a lot of the other charter schools, they have very, very few students as freshmen, sophomores, a few more as juniors, but then a lot as seniors. Do we have any data on our students who have withdrawn and gone to the charter schools for graduation or for catching up, accelerating, and then they wind up graduating from those schools?
So, I'm happy to pull data as long as I know specifically what the question is. There's so much information behind the data. So, we certainly know our individual charter school graduation numbers. But if you are asking for like how many credits a student went in with and how many credits are they leaving?
Not that detailed. But just some kind of an indication of how many of our students, rather than going through our own acceleration or what, A2020 and those kinds of things, instead choose to go to some of the non-traditional charter schools and graduate that way. I'm just, not how many credits, but...
How many students?
Yeah. How many of our students? And, you know, maybe there's some kind of a trend on why they're doing that. I know a lot, many times when we look at graduation data, there's typically a disclaimer that that doesn't include charter. If charter schools were not included, our rate would be much higher. However, the fact of the matter is that most of the kids in charter schools that are still struggling are our former, I mean, they're all Lee County students, and they were previously enrolled in our public school system. And many of them are still struggling there. So, I'm just wondering about those kind of statistics.
I can definitely circle back around and give that information to you all. We do continue to work with our, and our partners with our alternative learning charters. We know that they serve an extremely valuable purpose in reaching our most at-risk students. So, we're continuing to think outside of the box. Most recently, there's a community, well, the Southwest Water Community Foundation offered a grant, and we have a local boxing club that went for that grant. And part of their grant was mentoring and working with students in the community that were at risk. And so, they are now partnering with Coronado High School and going to start a really cool club about boxing and nutrition and hydration and that. So, those partnerships come as we continue to build relationships and really focusing on ensuring that we, as a district, are not only focusing on our traditional high schools, their graduation rate, but certainly about our alternatives.
Thank you. And my question would be to Ms. Taylor, is that something that you have readily available? Or is that something you have to do a lot of research on?
For the enrollment, for the numbers?
For, yes.
No, I can, I can get that to you very soon.
Okay. Thank you. Maybe it can come out on our update. Okay. Thank you.
It's Ms. Jordan. It's Ms. Gittens. I do have one question.
You lost your shot. No, I'm kidding. Go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
That's all right. How? Um, the question the Speaker mentioned about February 8th, about graduation. I am concerned the correlation of our recent numbers, COVID, because students who are not, you know, several months. I would really like to have that.
Ms. Gittens, you have cut in and out quite a few times. We got the February 8th, something regarding the graduation numbers, kids not being in school. I'm not sure what else, if anybody really understood what you're asking for.
If you want to talk...
With the COVID?
I would imagine Ms. Gittens is saying, you know, based around COVID and the transition into the different learning models, what type of impact will that have also on our graduation rate as well? And I know Jessica and her team have actually already been working on that. And that's a piece of data that they monitor regularly. So, I don't know if you want to elaborate a little bit about that now or circle back. You let me know.
Can I just say, what I was asking was, the rates we got for graduation for last year were affected by grandfathering some of the scores since there was no testing?
Correct. Okay. Did you understand the effect, the difference from that and now? Can someone answer that for her?
Sure. Let me talk a little bit about the graduation rate. Because we're still proud of that, you know, even though, yes, that everybody across the state benefited from the state rule about no state assessment for those seniors that are graduating. So, we all have a level playing field with that. Yeah, what we're proud of, and Shelley will talk about this more in depth at the next board presentation, is the rate in which Lee County increased compared to the Big Ten. And if you would have taken all those students out who said that they benefited from the state rule, we still would have increased our graduation rate as well. So, I think that that's an important piece for us to note. And I know Shelley had planned on going more in depth about that at the next board presentation.
Perfect.
Pretty significantly.
Ms. Gittens, does that answer your question? Ms. Gittens?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give you some feedback regarding attendance. I have kids who have been quarantined, and I have been contacted by their schools. One of the calls I got before the sun came up in the morning, when your phone rings that early, you know there's something not right. But it was clearly notification in time to keep my kid off the bus and not send him to school. Dr. Atkins probably remembers I was a pain about two things when I first joined the board. One was the automation of forms, which, by the way, this year, we've added athletic forms to the online, which is a beautiful thing. In addition to that, I wanted calls early in the day when our children are absent, so parents know early in the day. Well, when my kids are quarantined, I'm not getting that call, which is a beautiful thing too, because I'm not getting that annoying call saying, your kid is absent when the school made me make my kid be absent. Right? Does that make sense? So, from, also in terms of the transition for learning from face-to-face to online, it has been seamless. In both instances, in one instance, in one instance, I have a child who's been quarantined several times, and that student is able to engage in Lee Home Connect, which is great. And in the other instance, that's not an option, but that student doesn't want to be on Lee Home Connect anyways. The level of learning and teaching is not as high, but that's what we have all accepted as a district. But regardless, it's been completely seamless. It's been a very easy transition for us as a family. So, I just wanted you to have that positive feedback, because I didn't know what you guys did to make it work all smoothly. I have a better feel for that today. Just understand that from my perspective, it is going very smoothly. So, thank you.
And again, I'm not saying it's a negative thing. I'm just saying for every family, they don't have that situation. And we have 95,000 kids. We need to make sure that everyone has that same great experience. And you, as a parent, you know, you instill that to your kids on how to do all that. Some kids don't have all that. So, thank you for saying that to them, though. Appreciate that. Ms. Morgan, did you have?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you. Can, we can continue, please?
So, for our Community Connections section, what we did here is just highlight some areas. So, we want to focus primarily on areas in the presentation that we're going to get through. So, we're going to move on to home visits. And you can see here, we just have some examples of some home visits. I think Sheena Torres-Nutus is here with us. She supports our families who are homeless. So, here's an example. We went out to Salvation Army to support our students there and make sure they had technology and the needs they needed for distance learning. While we were there, in fact, they told us that they, like many of us, were short on some basic supplies like toilet paper. We were able to get some donations from each of our schools and bring that to them to hold that organization over. So, those are some examples of how we collaborate with our organizations. And the picture above, Sheena's in the green, above her is a staff member from Dunbar High. When I reached out to Dr. Shaker about the needs at Salvation Army, not only did he supply some toilet paper for the organization, but also took all of the food out of their food bank in their school to supply to Salvation Army, because their food banks were also very low at that time. So, we visited families, primarily schools accounted for their students. The administrators went out to families. But if there were instances where they really struggled to find students, they called on us as a second group to go out. And we were able to connect with over 100 families. And in collaboration with Veterans Park, we were also able to bring over 150 boxes of food to families. Each box of food had five days' worth of non-perishables. So, that was an activity that we were really happy during that time when there was a lot of uncertainty and fear out there about the virus, that we had people willing to go up and keep supporting families. We have a new way to monitor our home visits and focus that we're really excited about. That started in December, so we were able to pull some information from that. And since December 1st, we've had 13,175 parent-family-student contacts and 541 home visits. So, that's just since December 1. So, we'll continue to collect that data and share as appropriate. Some other connections we have are with some organizations. So, we recently entered into an MOU with Family Initiative. And one of the programs, they had a stronger together. And they work with up to 10 students with autism in the schools to create a stronger homeschool connection. They work specifically with students who are having some significant challenges. This wasn't created because of COVID, but in fact, it just came at the perfect time. Because we know we had a lot of students that transitioned back into school that had some challenges. So, we're working very closely with them. And they had some parents who've already been working with the organization. And we have a middle school parent who said that since the, starting the program, she can see the light at the end of the tunnel, communication with the school has been better, and she feels like everybody is really working together for her child. So, that's some great feedback from our families. With the Reunite Program, that's a collaboration between the Lee County Sheriff's Department and United Way. And what that is, is a program to locate high-risk individuals who might wander or run off. So, it might be elderly individuals. It could be children with autism. So it might be elderly individuals, it could be children with autism, it could be for a variety of reasons. So we are collaborating with them. It's, again, been some challenges given our current conditions, but they have a program that they will help families take, like, an article of clothing or a scent, and they will capture it in a clean capture. And if that individual, who is high-risk for elopement, is ever gone, they can use that for, to expedite search and rescue. So that's really exciting. I know the last talk, they had about 2,000 kits and really wanted to collaborate with us. They came and spoke at our ESE Parent Advisory to that group. And we are also working with the Pre-K Department, so that when those parents come here for evaluations, we can share that information and maybe get them signed up right at that time while they're here in the building. And the last one on that screen is Hanley Foundation. We recently signed a letter of support for their grant. And we do work with them on our SAFE program. So students who maybe are caught for a first offense in the school with drugs or alcohol could go through Hanley. And that's a four, they meet four times, they meet with the student three times, and then with all as a family counseling session. So that is one option for schools, for students who don't have a significant history of being involved in this type of behavior, where they would be accessing other things. They also have Project Success, which is a four-class series for at-risk students between the ages of 12 and 18, that they're looking to roll out in the spring. And additionally, they have some parent support classes that they would like to begin offering. And here we just have a visual, you could see, you saw this visual earlier with some of our internal programs, and you can just see the impact of the work that we do with our community organizations, and how many layers there are to this, and how many supports our students have. So we work in collaboration with these organizations, sometimes daily, depending on student needs. And we have some amazing partnerships that really allow us to make sure the whole child is served and that all of their needs are met.
Do you have any questions on this? Are there any questions on this? Ms. Fisher, do you have any questions? And I, sorry, I did not call on you last time.
No, I'm just going to wait till the end, because this is my part of the strategic plan, and I'm involved with this part.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm very impressed so far with the presentation. Thank you.
Ms. Gittens, do you have any questions?
No, I'm fine.
Thank you. Ms. Javonelli? Ms. Javonelli, do you have any questions? Okay, I was going to mark you absent. Ms. Patricia, do you have any questions?
I do not.
No, say none? We have no questions. Thank you.
All right, then we'd like to talk with you for a few minutes about where we're going and how we're continuing our sport, expanding our sport to ensure that we focus on the whole child and ensure that our students are in school learning every day. So you can see some of the focus for professional development going forward. As I mentioned earlier, we are going to continue our focus on restorative practices. You can see our focus on mentoring and support. There's currently, I know Shelley's in, in efforts to expand our check-and-connect school sites and ensure that those are happening. And then our Mental Health Mondays with Kids Minds That Matter for our Community Connection.
So one of our next steps is our Ambassador Program that we are starting this spring. And that is a volunteer program. We're looking for a volunteer in each school. And their primary job, as we start off, will be to welcome students who are either in foster care or currently experiencing homelessness. So as a student enters school, it's just that extra connection and that opportunity for them to really meet somebody in the school and say, "Hey, if you have a need, you can come here and you can find me." Now, that person might not be the mentor for the student long-term, but they would be that one person that those students could really connect with coming in. Because we understand that these populations of students have specific needs and barriers unique to their situation. So that's something that we're working on right now. And here's just our plan as we go into the spring. And what we'd like to do is develop this into programs where we actually have team meetings for students and work in a community effort. We recently, on Friday, actually, just had a conversation with the Lee County Community Alliance and the work that they did. So we want to work with the community, work with our juvenile justice system and all of those different pieces to support some of the needs of students who are in these populations.
All right, and so here we're at Grad Academy. So the one thing that I just really want to highlight is why we chose looking at 10th graders. And when you look at the trajectory of students and their ability to earn credits over their high school years, and you look at the difference in timeliness between the sophomore year and the junior year, there is a huge difference. It goes from like 25% to about 42% of the required credits that you really need. And so when we're addressing looking at those students and what their needs are, this is why we've really prioritized looking at those 10th graders. So we're really excited about Grad Academy. Students will start there next week. We have five students. So it's small and it's mighty. But again, we are utilizing the existing resources that are there in the Prevention Academy and looking forward to the impact that this will make on future grads. And actually had a student show up last week, so. Yes, we did. They were very excited, their parent brought them. So we had to sadly turn them away and say, "The program's not ready. We need to finish Semester One really strong, as strong as you can." And then we'll start with you February 1st.
So here for a personal statement, this was a documentary that Student Services hosted. It's about three seniors who are experiencing homelessness and their journey to cross the finish line to graduation. We are working in February to have schools have the opportunity to also show this documentary to their staff. It's very powerful, and it shows how resilient and strong our students can be even in the face of adversity. So we're excited about that. The other screen on here is the Leadership Coaching Lab. And somebody asked before about disparities and how we're doing that work. We are working with the Equity Leads and the Principal Leads. And one of these specific activities we are engaging is a partnership with Dr. Bethany Peters from the Coaching Lab. And she is providing the intercultural developmental inventory to each of our principal leads. And that gives them an opportunity to really look at their own intercultural assessment, and you look at where you need to go and maybe areas of development. It's very personal. And we think as we start even getting deeper into this journey of looking at disparities and racism and implicit bias, that we really need to understand our own journey and where we are in that. So each of our principal leads will go through that. There might be an opportunity for all of our principals, if they, our principal leads find this to be a valuable activity. And after the IDI is completed, each principal lead will get either like a half-hour, 45-minute coaching session individual with Dr. Peters or her colleague. So that was what I was talking about before, that would also like to take this opportunity, and I'll send some additional information out, that if you would like to take the IDI and also have a personal coaching session with Dr. Peters, that that is something that we would love to have our board members participate in. And we just think there's a lot of value for that and a lot of, you know, personal growth that will come out of that activity.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, so is, I would definitely like, thank you for that. My question is, does it have to be all of the board, or can we do it individually?
It is individual when we take it. There is an opportunity to look at a group as a whole and where a group needs to go. We may be doing some of that with our leads, but this activity and how the board would do it would be individual. So you would take the assessment on your own, and then you would sign up for your personal coaching session to review the results of your assessment.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we're going to wrap up today by bringing this back to Objective 1, Goal 7, and our progress monitoring data. Object 1, Goal 7 is monitored through an annual perceptual survey given to our students, began in 2018, 2019 with the Baseline Administration. Over in that Baseline Administration, the satisfaction of our students and their affirmative response to the question, "There's an adult in my school who cares about me," or "There's an adult at school that I can go to if I need help," was about 64%. That was a small, limited administration. Last year, we expanded that administration, and our target, our response went to 92.4% in elementary and 86.1% in secondary. We're currently in the administration of this year's survey. It is ongoing through the end of this week and will compile results at the end of this week. But our targets are 93% and 88%. And I'll go to a question that was asked earlier in terms of looking at our outcomes for our work. And this is one piece, it's a perceptual piece, but it's a very important piece. Because if students.
Ms. Gittens, Mr. Bradley speaking? Thank you.
So it is a very important piece in terms of how students effectively respond to the schooling experience. That helps us to know if they're also remaining engaged. We do monitor attendance data. If they're having a good experience within the school, that plays into our behavior and discipline data. And our, finally, our outcome data in terms of, do we see students graduating from our schools, graduating on time, and having successful completions? So it's one big, one piece that plays into that whole complement of data that we do look at to see that our work is on target and making a difference for our students.
More questions? Well, I would just like to say, I love the Ambassador Mentor Program. I think that is a phenomenal thing to do. And I think that does help people to feel welcome when they have that person. And then I was just curious too about the homeless, because you had touched on that. And I see somebody out here with homeless. Has our numbers gone up since the COVID situation for our children that are considered homeless?
Our numbers have gone up. We are still looking and we're working with student enrollment to find ways to identify students who are experiencing homelessness. So that's one of the things we're working directly on.
I'm sorry, Ms. Gittens, Ms. Gittens, could you please mute yourself? We're listening to your conversation. Thank you.
So we're working directly with student enrollment to find ways to better identify families who are experiencing homelessness. I don't know if there's.
Actually, I did want to add, along with our homeless numbers, with the extension of the eviction moratorium, so individuals are not being evicted, that has kept the numbers steady. I know that that has recently been extended, so that does impact our overall numbers. The caveat is the, as we reach out to families, it's extra legwork and interaction and engaging and identifying who is living in a situation that would qualify as homeless.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Yeah. So along those lines, do we have any data on kids who have been identified as being trafficked? I don't know if we have that. And then I had some data to share from one of the, about, what about hospitalizations?
At this time, we do not have district data of our students that have been potentially trafficked. We could probably reach out to law enforcement or our community partners to look at age ranges and get you that data. Sometimes we're aware and sometimes we're unaware, as you well know. But we can certainly get that data. And also, as far as number of hospitalizations.
I'm so sorry. Ms. Gittens, can you please mute yourself? Ms. Gittens?
Maybe it's Ms. Javonelli.
Ms. Javonelli? Are you muted? Thank you. Sorry, Ms. First.
We do receive reports from our local law enforcement agencies, as well as the Mobile Crisis Team regarding number of out-of-school involuntary hospitalizations. We also are aware, obviously, of those that occur in school. So we can, we can get that data for you. We track that so that we're aware. And the other piece to that, however, would be any adolescent or K-12 student, I should say, that had an involuntary hospitalization that had to be medically cleared first, because the hospital under HIPAA will not report that to us. So our data is really based on Mobile Crisis Team and then also the law enforcement agencies, both during school and outside of school hours. In addition, with the Mobile Crisis Team, what we receive weekly is also the number of our students they were able to de-escalate and connect with services. And they run at about a 96% to 98% de-escalation rate. And so they are tremendously successful from a clinical perspective in de-escalating our students. We have to keep in mind, too, that the threshold for an involuntary hospitalization and that criteria is much higher for a licensed mental health professional. They have to do, you know, several hours' worth of interviewing and discussing with that individual before they can go ahead and complete that paperwork to determine they meet the criteria for an involuntary hospitalization. Our law enforcement officers are very, they work very hard to ensure that they're also making the best decision. But in statute, their criteria is lower for initiating the Baker Act paperwork.
Say that last part again?
In statute, the threshold for a law enforcement officer for initiating the Baker Act is, the threshold is lower because they're not a licensed mental health professional.
But you're essentially saying that we're putting in more effort than what the statute requires?
We are, in the sense that we're calling the Mobile Crisis Response Teams. However, that actually is in statute, and it strengthened this summer in school-based statute, that schools are to do their very best to engage the Mobile Crisis Response Team before we go towards law enforcement.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher, to jump in on you, I just needed that clarification.
No, that's fine, thank you.
No, and I'm glad that you did, because I was going to ask that too, as well as with the Baker Act, because I know earlier you said that we, as a district, we do not Baker Act. That's law enforcement.
Correct.
I just wanted clarification, because it sounded earlier like we do that. So I wanted to make sure that that is understood, that we are not that person.
Correct. We call either the Mobile Crisis Response Team, or if they're unable to respond, or the student is in immediate and clear and present danger, then it's law enforcement.
Thank you. And then, Ms. Fisher, are you going to give a report afterwards, or shall I ask other people questions, or do you want to continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, because I know you're going to.
I have a little bit, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I wanted to add something about, lose track of time, about a week ago, I was on Zoom where we were talking about kids in the foster care system, how to better serve them. That's when I first learned about the Ambassador Program, which I think is great. And something else that was discussed on that call that wasn't mentioned, that hopefully will be enacted, is adding a couple more codes, right? That, for instance, as a guardian ad litem, I have a young woman who's in a group home, and that is not a good situation for so many, for so many students. And, you know, when I was, when I was teaching, honestly, the way, and I taught high school, the only way that I found out that students were in, let's say, a homeless situation, I remember one particular young man who was a senior, and his graduation was in trouble. And it just gave me a whole new perspective when I found out, just from a chat with him, actually in the doorway of my classroom, that I found out that he was sleeping on whatever sofa he could, he could find. And I know it's a whole lot worse situation now. And if teachers had that in addition to the other coding, it might just give them another perspective on what that child is going through. Because so many times, unfortunately, and it's harder for high school teachers, because they come and then they go, and, you know, we don't have them all day, to really have a handle on, you know, this, this is a child that really needs a lot of extra. a handle on, you know, this, this is a child that really needs a lot of extra. So I'm, I'm hoping we do follow through and have those kinds of coatings and to also give teachers training or something, you know, you, you're going to show that, they saw the film, you said? The teachers have seen the film? And, I mean, I, I think unfortunately, too many of us live in a bubble and we don't fully recognize the horrible situations that some of our children are facing.
Ms. Vaughn, I think that Mr. Magno is going to address that.
Oh, and I'm done with my comment, yeah.
We just, from that meeting we had, yes, we do now have the DCF code, the symbol in the focus for it, and we also have one symbol for homeless as well. And we're able to pull reports by school or whatever, so it helps us target our initiatives. Just wanted to put that in there from our last meeting.
Oh, great. Because I think that's going to be, in addition to the Ambassador Program, that really, really is going to help the teachers have a better understanding. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Please, whoever's on the phone, mute yourself when you're not speaking. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan, do you have any comments?
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Chivinelli, do you have any comments? And I apologize to you all. Ms. Chivinelli, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher, the floor is yours. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Patrica.
We've talked about this, or I've talked about this a lot at the table, and I will let it go today if there's no traction amongst the board. But we had a mention of it at our Friday training, our Friday afternoon training, and I know a couple of the board members have heard about it through FSBA, adding equity and diversity as a goal in the strategic plan, making sure that we're looking at every decision we're making through the lens of equity and diversity to include many of the items that were presented today, restorative practices. And there's a long list of them that I think are coming forward as a result of a focus on equity and inclusion, but to be more comprehensive. So I'd like to ask the board, do you want me to stop bringing this up? Is this something that we're interested in doing, or should I let it go?
May I respond?
Please, Ms. Gittens.
Um, we have this strategy thought, and I know that I have thought it up. And I don't understand Ms. Patrica saying that we have not had an appetite for it or wanted to go further. I am definitely off for including equity and diversion and, I'm, I'm sorry, equity and inclusion in our strategic plan in all that we do. So I don't know that, I, I don't recall it being brought forward and we voted it down. So we, yes, go forward, we need to do it. In fact, I have looked at some areas and talked to some of the advisory board members about it as well.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Dr. Atkins?
To me, I believe that, and I would hope that everything that we do, we look at that when we are coming to, when we're thinking about everything that we're doing for the district, that we're incorporating all of those in there, the equity, diversity, and inclusion on every aspect of that, is, that's something that we need to add as a...
Yeah, I think I, I need a little bit more information on what, what you might be looking for as it relates to a specific goal. I can say that academically, whether you're looking at any of the, the data that we collect, we typically break that down into subgroups so we can identify any subgroup that may be needing additional support. And that's part of, you know, that's just part of the ongoing process. And that's whether you're talking graduation rate or third grade, you know, reading. You know, it's all, all applies.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any comments on that? Or is there a specific item that you were speaking with?
Yes, so we have four goals in the strategic plan, right? To improve academic outcomes for students, to recruit and retain highly effective and effective employees, to increase community engagement, and, number four, brain farting.
Please go.
I'm sorry. Continuous systemic improvement.
Thank you.
I'm proposing adding number five, being equity and inclusion. Because every time I look at an agenda, it tells me on the agenda what part of the strategic plan, the item I'm about to vote for or against, is tied to. I believe that adding this as the fifth leg of the stool, so to speak, forces us to look and tie the decisions that we're making to equity and inclusion, if at all possible. That's what I'm proposing. Instead of having four, four goals under the strategic plan, having five, the fifth being equity and inclusion. And, and again, if the appetite isn't there to formalize this, then I will drop it, but I...
But I don't think it's the appetite, because to me, I believe that in everything that we do, I believe that, as I said, I would hope that that's something that we always look at as part of that. So maybe just that verbiage being put into that would suffice what you're...
Formalizing it.
Formalizing. Dr. Atkins?
Well, I think, you know, if I think about the four major objectives that you just recited, and under each one of those, we have some specific KPIs. So, you know, if it is the board's desire, we could look at potentially, you know, maybe a draft of something to bring back to you. Now, we do have, for example, under, under, let's say, the first, the first one, you've got a number of specific, specific objectives under there as it, as it relates to closing achievement gaps, et cetera. So all of that stuff, that's there. I know that, that Dr. Pruitt, when you look at the workforce piece, that is, you know, constantly looking for ways to increase diversity in the workforce. It's a difficult one. I've seen more out of this group than I've ever seen. But again, you know, that's an area that I know that there is specific focus. I mean, what you do is you pull some of that stuff out, out from under the other ones and put them up under a fifth objective.
Ms. Morgan, did you have...
So I don't think we need a fifth objective, because I do think it is embedded in the other four. What I'm trying to figure out is a way to show that linkage visually and then make reference to it, as Ms. Patrica suggests, in everything that comes before the board. And I don't know quite how to answer that question. But I don't, I don't see creating a fifth strategic goal.
Ms. Vaughn?
Ms. Jordan?
Just a second, please, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Vaughn?
I agree with Ms. Morgan. It's my same thought.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens, go ahead, please.
Yes, I can do sample that I have worked on with others that does not create a, but it adds current plan. Will share that with both. And it does not, and I don't, I, its legs to be embedded, strategic plan itself, there's a way to do that, and I will share that with you.
Thank you. Ms. Chivinelli? Ms. Chivinelli?
Yes, I, I could be with that.
I'm sorry, could you please repeat and speak up?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't think we need a fifth one as well. I'm, I'm in agreement with Ms. Morgan. Thank you.
Ms. Cindy, do you have something to share?
Yes, I just wanted to, to remind you that the strategic plan is a living document, that we are making changes basically on a daily basis in terms of how we address those, those overarching objectives. And we have specific strategic initiatives that go along with those. And as we go through the year, one of the things that we do on an annual basis is a SWOT analysis, where we look at what are the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to our district. And it's just about time to start doing that within all of our departments, because we're coming up on budget season. And as we're talking about budget, we're talking about, you know, what projects do we need to be focusing on? So this is certainly something that all of our departments could be talking about, how are we going to make sure that we are covering that focus of diversity and inclusion within each of our departments as we work toward those long-term objectives? I would tend to agree that, that we don't need another objective added to our strategic plan, because I believe that that is embedded within our plan. But I think that this awareness that you've brought to us today would be a great start for us as we start this process of, of reexamining the plan, as we do every year, and saying, you know, are we embedding it as much as we need to, and are we making it as visual as we need to, so that people understand that this is being addressed on a daily basis? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And that was exactly the guidance that I wanted from the board. I will drop it.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Cindy. Ms. Fisher?
Thank you. So first off, I had a long litany of notes here, much of which I was able to scratch out and eliminate because of the comprehensive and excellent presentation we've had from our team. And I want to congratulate you all and thank you for all the obviously difficult work that you've done. And, and I'm going to come in with the partnerships and collective efforts. We know that in order, our under overarching goal is for student academic success. And we know that in order for kids to be academically successful, they have to be healthy physically, mentally, and emotionally. So the efforts of the Student Services Team, along with our community partners, is invaluable. So I just wanted to add that, in addition to creating curriculum in your department with your master health teacher, Ms. Roy, who has done an excellent job, we have so much additional instruction for student safety, prevention of difficult situations, and emotional wellness. I know that the Prevention Specialists put out newsletters that are distributed to schools and parents. I do understand that with input from us, many of our community agencies provide services to our schools. One of my long-term relationships is with the Drug Free Coalition. And so they're very helpful in providing resources to us for meeting the goal of the Florida Rule to Substance Abuse and Prevention. This coming Saturday, they are having their run for prevention, which is the way they raise money to fund Drug House Odyssey, which is a 26-year happening here in Lee County, and features the involvement of our medical people, our law enforcement, and many of our legal team from the 20th Judicial Circuit. This year, it'll take place in Cape Coral at J.C. Park, along the beautiful Calusahatchee River, and the course is stroller and pet-friendly. On February 17th, the Southwest Florida Teen Leadership Council is presenting a town hall meeting for parents and the community. This is a collaborative effort involving prevention coalitions from the whole Southwest Florida area, and includes teens from each county. The teens have very real concerns and anxiety about social unrest and current events. They also have concerns about how this is going to affect their education, going to college, and certainly how it impacts high school seniors. They invite you to submit questions during the program in the chat box, and you're able to access it on the Drug Free Coalition Southwest Florida Prevention Parents Facebook page, and I can provide that information in writing later. We work with many of the other agencies. I know that night vision presentations offered by the Florida National Guard are designed to help elementary, middle, and high school students have a better understanding of how important it is to stay drug-free. And they demonstrate the road to addiction through the five gateway drugs of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, prescription drugs, and synthetic marijuana. I know that we have Talk 15 program, which encourages parents to listen and talk to their kids. And this is supported by AMC Theaters and is available online, along with student-created public service advertisements. Healthy Minds is a, an arm of the Healthy Lee Lifestyle Coalition, which continues to move forward in hopes that we can get more community members part of the process. They have decided that working together, rather in silos, is the objective, to help create meaningful, positive change in this community. Healthy Minds started around Sept-, last spring, but launched in September. And what they do is a team of professionals go out to visible places, farmers' markets, food pantries, and different events taking place in the community. And they set up, and they are there to provide resources, to offer help to people who are in crisis, and to provide referrals to appropriate agencies. They do plan to expand to other venues, health fairs, other agencies, senior homes, and they're inviting more and more professionals to participate. So since September, the screenings have resulted in Lee County alone in helping 75 different families be either found homes, got the mental health services, or other medical attention that they needed. There's also Kids Minds Matter. And so while we continue to collaborate and, and, and address mental health care for youth, they feel that they're alarmed by the new numbers. And they said that Pediatric Emergency Room Baker Act at Galasano Hospital were up 66% during the fall of 2020. And that wait times for pediatric mental health appointments are up to a year or more. So in order to widely communicate these urgent needs and the resources available for families in our region, they reached out to media partners and they held a virtual press conference to ask the media for help in telling the stories of children's and fa-, children and families impacted by the area's mental health deficit. And in order to share the resources to help children and families and plan for the area to address this epidemic. So the media has been providing PSAs and trying to get people attentive to this. They have garnered more support from local professional organizations and continue to move forward to be able to meet the need in this community. So it's been an honor for me, as a former Student Services worker, to see the progress that's been made and to be able to also meet with Lori and her team monthly for a mental health update. And I continue to support the strategic plan and, and the Student Services as a real base for student success. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate you being here and the presentation. It was really great. Learned a lot every time you come, so I, I am thankful for that. And is there anything for the good of the order today? Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. I wanted to remind all of us here on, on the board that during our briefing on January 12th, during the time that we were discussing RSM and possibly engaging them for various other services, the discussion arose that the district has, and this hall was focusing on the booster clubs, that the district has a manual that was already in existence, and all of us received copies of that manual. And at that board meeting, just to remind you, we, as board members, said that we were going to review that manual and that staff was going to advise us on training that had already been done at schools and/or planned training, what, what they had decided that they might want to do. Keeping in mind that that manual was written originally... they might want to do, keeping in mind that that manual was written originally, I think we said like 2004 or something like that, and it was kind of hidden. It's not, I'm, I'm not saying hidden on purpose, but it just wasn't out there for us to be looking at as we discussed issues with, especially with the Cypress Lake High School Booster Club. And so it was somewhat new information for us. So hopefully everybody has that manual and is or has already reviewed it and the training piece. But we also said that we were going to come back at another workshop and, keeping in mind what we had said. Ms. Patrica doesn't want to hear this, but anyway.
Why would you say that?
Yeah, no, go ahead, Ms. Vaughn.
I have gotten nothing left.
Okay, I, I just, I, I said it because it was a touchstone for her before, but anyway, let me go on.
Go ahead, please.
That we set the date. I had talked to Ms. Jordan a few days ago about that and I wanted to bring it to the whole board and back again to Ms. Jordan for the record. Has there been any, have you been able to set a date for a workshop?
No, we are working on, we are working on a, setting a date on that and as well as I've spoken with RSM on this as well. So, and Mr. Pre Bruno, they're working on it. It's going to go, they're going to be looking at it to RSM to make sure that it, it's what we need to have as well as, because their, one concern was that it wasn't authoritative. Is that, Mr. Pre Bruno?
If I could just, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
If I could just add to that, Ms. Vaughn, staff has already met as preliminary information to try to review the manual, comparing it to other districts. So the manual is being updated. Once the manual is updated, it will be sent to RSM for them to review as well. In addition, the outline and the process for the training is also being discussed. So there are positive steps in the right direction in moving forward. So I would anticipate probably, if not probably in March or so, there will be more information that is provided to the board in terms of the manual itself and the training that the district anticipates moving forward with, with regards to booster clubs.
So instead of doing things halfway, we're trying to make sure we have everything together when it comes back to us, so it's one and done.
Okay, is that going to be coming forward at a workshop or a briefing, Mr. Pre Bruno?
I can't answer that question just yet. We're still in the preliminary stages. All I can tell you is what we've done thus far, which is to review the manual, comparing it to other districts, updating the manual and moving forward with that process along with developing the appropriate training.
Okay, and I, I would appreciate since, as the vice chair, I facilitate the briefing meetings, I would appreciate that any information that comes to our chair or to our board attorney be shared with me so, because I feel it, it's incumbent on me since that discussion was at a briefing meeting that I followed through. And, and so I would appreciate being apprised of anything on that. Basically, I wasn't saying it's time to do it one and done. What I was saying is a reminder for all of us to review and to keep in mind that this is going to come up, whether it is at a workshop or at another briefing. Thank you. That's what I wanted to say.
It's definitely on the list and will definitely keep you apprised of that.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no other, no other comments, this meeting is adjourned and we will be back at 1:00. Thank you again so much. Appreciate it.